The meeting in just a couple of minutes. Welcome, everyone. Come on in. Be seated. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's the City of San Carlos's Planning and Transportation Commission regular meeting from March 17th. Happy day of Irish heritage. I did want to note a point of order before we get started. There are two items on the agenda tonight. One is a public hearing for the Alexandria project. The item is going to be continued to another agenda with a date to be determined. However, we are happy to take public comment on that item tonight. And so the only, and then the public hearing will be kept open, continuing to when it's heard in the future. So we're happy to have you. So we've been called to order Assembly Bill 2449. There are no teleconference requests because all commissioners are present. Hello. And so then we'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Andrea, could we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Commissioner Anand?
Here.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Present.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Present.
Chair Clements?
Present. Thank you. Has, is for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to make a public comment for any item not on tonight's agenda and you're here in person, please fill out a request to speak form that's located in the back and then give it to staff here and then we can call on you. Or you can raise your hand and come on up, but then we're going to want to record your name for the record. If you're on Zoom, hoping that people on Zoom, feel free to also make public comments. The Zoom meeting is being shown on the screen now. It's number 886-3546-7439. You can virtually raise your hand by clicking on reactions and then raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're joining by phone, you can press star nine and then to unmute when they call on you, star six. Okay, first we'll take any public comments that are here in person. Would anyone like to make a public comment for items not on tonight's agenda? No, we're going to get to the Alexandria public comment in just a minute. Thanks. Okay. Seeing none in chambers. Lynette, do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
There are none.
Okay. We'll give Zoom just another 30 seconds or so. If anyone would like to make a public comment and is attending virtually, please feel free to raise your hand and we can call on you at this time. Lynette, are there any hands raised?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Then I need a motion to close the public comment.
I'll make a motion that we close the public comment period.
Thank you, in a second.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
Chair Clements?
Yes. We are on to item 6A on the agenda. Approval of minutes from the March 3rd, 2025 Planning and Transportation Commission meeting. Do any commissioners have any comments or proposed corrections they'd like to make? No? Okay, I do not either. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the March 3rd, 2025 Planning and Transportation Commission meeting minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
Chair Clements?
Yes, thank you. Okay. Now we are on to a public hearing. This public hearing started at a previous meeting. The public hearing is still open. It is, it is in regards to the Alexandria Center for Life Sciences. Andrea, do I need to read all of the APNs and addresses? I'm going to do it. We're going to be here for a minute. Okay. The address is 961 to 967, 987, 1003, 1011, 1015, 1057, and 1075 Commercial Street. And 915, 921, 1015, 1055, and 1063 Old County Road. The APNs are listed on your screen. I'm going to read them. 046162010, APN 046162210, APN 046162270, APN 046162280, APN 046162290, APN 046184090, APN 046184110, APN 046184120, APN 046184280, APN 046184290, and last but not least, APN 046184300. This is a public hearing to consider recommending that the city council certify the environmental impact report and adopt the planned development zoning, the planned development permit and development agreement, and consider approving the tentative parcel map, the transportation demand management plan, the grading and dirt haul certificate, the master sign program, the tree removal and design review to develop the Alexandria life science research and development campus. That's the longest we've ever had. Okay. As I said earlier, this item is on the agenda, but it is not ready to be heard, considered tonight by the commission. And so however, while everyone is here, the public hearing is still open. We are happy to take public comment on this item. Your comments will be noted for the record. Staff will be taking down the public comments. They will be integrated into the overall public comment amalgamation for the entire project, for all of the meetings that the public hearing has been open. And so it'll already be on the record. When we do hear it again, don't feel the need to come and say it again. You will be on the record from this meeting. Of course, you're welcome to anyway.
Okay. And through the chair, if I could just mention, with it being continued to a date uncertain, that means that when it is scheduled, we'll send out a brand new notice. So we won't keep scheduling it to subsequent meetings. You can always find the agendas the Thursday before the meeting at cityofsancarlos.org/agenda. And you should be able to see when it's on there. And we'll also reach out to the applicant to make sure that they're contacting with the new date as well.
Great. Andrea, do we have any speaker cards?
I don't yet, but I do know there's one gentleman who will be speaking.
If someone, if someone would like to speak now, please approach the podium and we can ask for your name for the record, although we do prefer it in writing. Maybe we could do that afterwards. The speaker cards are over in that corner over there. Why don't you speak first, then you can just fill it out for the record after that.
Hi, okay. Thanks for, my name's Anthony Urbina. I'm with the sheet metal workers, union local 104, but also with the building trades council here. And I just wanted to have our apprentices who came down here tonight really like to see this project move forward.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Anthony, just a point of order. Can we start the timer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please, oh, thanks. You have two minutes, Anthony.
Okay.
But the timer goes, there we go.
We'll start over.
Thank you. Thank you. That's fine.
So they were all apprentices here. These are all apprentices. I was an apprentice. I'm now, went through the trade myself. And they, they knew, you know, it's important to have a job for them to go to, you know, during their apprenticeship. This is a great opportunity for them to, to be able to work in the, in the area. Some of them live close, somewhere in Samatelle County, somewhere across the bay. But they came down here tonight just to show that, you know, we really want to have this project happen. And it's going to be, it's hundreds of construction jobs, you know, for, for the Bay Area here in San Carlos. Lots of, a lot of these apprentices, you know, they're coming from different areas and, but it's still, we still have ones that are local in the Samatelle County to be on these projects. And it helps because the training centers, and in order for us to bring in new apprentices, we got to have jobs for them. So this is one of those projects that it would, I mean, it's going to be huge. So it's going to be a lot, a lot of people to get to work. So thanks for everybody. I'm glad they were able to be down here and show support. And we're always looking forward to show support in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone for coming. And wonderful. And thank you for filling out a paperwork. I understand. Yes. If you could give that over. We have another public comment here live. Please sort of state your name for the record and you got two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maxwell Shumkill. I'm actually speaking in behalf of Evan Ruane. He's a resident of San Carlos. He is an apprentice in our program. I'm from the IBW local 617. We represent 1,700 electricians here in Samatelle County. And Evan Ruane is actually in class right now and he can't make it. So that's why I'm here in his behalf. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Evan Ruane. I'm a resident of San Carlos and I'm also an apprentice with the IBW local 617, the standard of electrical power professionals in Samatelle County. I'm one of many apprentices in the different construction trades who live in town. The only reason I'm getting the chance to learn my trade and have a solid middle-class job is because there are great projects like this one that use union contractors who hire local journeyman and apprentices. The apprenticeship training center that I belong to and that my union is affiliated with can only onboard so many new apprentices each year. The number of new apprentices depends on the amount of construction projects that are awarded to contractors that hire apprentices like me. That's why I'm glad to hear that the trades have reached out to Alexandria to discuss how this project will be built. This is a big project. Hundreds of construction workers will be needed to build it. Excuse me. It makes a difference if it's the local construction workforce and apprentices like me that are on the job. Local wages paid to local workers to reinvest back into the local economy. A dollar earned here in San Carlos should be a dollar spent here in San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Is there anyone else present tonight who would like to give a public comment? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Eric Lee. I'm also with IBW. And I guess the conviction in my beliefs is best illustrated by the fact that this is how I decided to spend my birthday. So.
Happy birthday.
But I had birthdays down at San Carlos Bowl. I grew up in Burton, playing in Burton Park. I graduated Carmont High School. I am a lifelong member of this community and I fully support this project. I just hope people consider using union labor to support the men and women like these kids here that also work in this area. And there's a particular sense of pride when you're building something in your area. You want it built right. You want it built correctly. And you make it look good. So I hope that's taken into consideration when you consider who's building this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker? Thank you. If you could state your name and you have two minutes. Thank you.
I moved down to San Carlos in 1991. I was in the IBW apprenticeship out here in the, off Al County Road for three years. Okay, so during that apprenticeship, I worked at Oracle on that project as an apprentice. Turned out, became a foreman. I ran, ran a lot of work out there. I'm still living in San Carlos. I want to be a journeyman, a foreman for these apprentices when they come out here. Okay. And this is a good opportunity. And it's nice for me. It's a easier commute, so. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment this evening? No? Okay. I don't. Yeah, that's the next. Yeah, I don't see anyone else physically in chambers. So we'll go to those who are online. Lynette, do we have any hands raised to make a comment on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. We'll just give it another 30 seconds. If anyone who is watching this on Zoom or on the phone would like to make a comment, please feel free to raise your hand at this time. And/or you can press star nine if you're on the phone to firstly raise your hand. Lynette, do we have anyone raising hands?
There are none.
Okay. Thank you. So usually, usually we would end the public comment here. We are not doing that. We are keeping the public comment period open. The hearing will continue to the next time when this item is considered. The date is to be determined. And yeah, as, as staff said, please watch the San Carlos website. I don't know if we have it pulled up. Maybe we could show people where you can find the agendas. There's a page for agendas and every time that, you can always see it on Thursday afternoon, what will be heard the following Monday night. Thank you. Great. On the public meetings. And then there's the Planning and Transportation Commission meeting. And then the packets over to the right. So that's where we can find it. CityofSanCarlos.org/. Oh. No, it's okay. Forward slash city underscore hall. That's a little awkward. So anyway, just hit the icon for public meetings so we can track this item. Thank you.
And through the chair, I can also add that you are able to send in written comments if you want via email to planning@cityofSanCarlos.org.
Thank you.
And those will be included in the packet that gets published for the hearing itself. So that's another option as well.
Yeah, very good point. Yeah, and tell your friends. As many letters as you'd like can be submitted, so.
We include them all.
One per person, but yeah. Okay, great. So at this time, we will go on to Agenda Item 7B concerning 21 El Camino Real. This is the consideration of design review for a new sign program. I'm going to go slowly so I can hear it. For an existing multi-tenant building, including a new monument sign and a protected tree removal permit at 21 El Camino Real. It's called San Carlos Plaza. This is APN 045320230. Thank you. And we have a staff presentation?
Yes.
Great. Welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Vinnie Chen and I am an assistant planner here at the City of San Carlos. This evening, I will be presenting the 21 El Camino Real project before you. So before I begin, I would like to introduce the team behind the project. From Summer Hill Apartments, Summer Hill Communities is Richard Norris and Elaine Breeze, Michael Birch from Scott AG, working on behalf of the Fong family with Paul Fong here today representing them. The request for tonight is to consider approving the design review for a new sign program for the existing multi-tenant buildings, including a new monument sign and a protected tree removal at 21 El Camino Real, APN number 045320230. The agenda tonight will be as follows. Project overview, followed by a short presentation from the applicant, and then time for questions and comments, followed by the action. So the subject site, 21 El Camino Real, also known as San Carlos Plaza, is located between the Caltrain tracks and El Camino Real. The surrounding uses include other retail businesses like the CVS store to the north. To the west, across from the plaza, is a gas station and retail store Woodcraft. And to the south is a hand car wash business. San Carlos Plaza features a diverse mix of tenants, including restaurants, medical offices, and recreational centers, as shown above. So here you can see the existing pole sign to the left and then the unenclosed dumpsters to the right. As an overview, the request before you is to review and take action on the request for design review for a sign program for the existing multi-tenant site, including a new monument sign and protected tree removal permit. So the subject site is zoned to mixed-use North Boulevard 120. The site is approximately 1.29 acres in size with a required parking of 113 spaces. Currently, there is approximately 130 spaces existing. Due to the proposed site improvements, the proposed parking will be reduced to 127 spaces, which is still well over the amount of parking that is required. The site is developed with two existing single-story multi-tenant buildings, totally approximately 31,150 square. approximately 31,150 square feet, housing a total of 13 tenants. The project is exempt from CEQA due to Section 15311, which exempts projects with construction or replacement of minor structures, including on-premise signs. Before I go into the project details, I would like to provide a little bit of background as to why the applicant has applied for this project. Previously, in 1980, a Convenance Conditions and Restrictions CCNR Agreement was established between the owners of 11 El Camino Real and 21 El Camino Real. The agreement allowed shared parking and cross-access between the two properties. Then Summer Hill Communities Apartments acquired 11 El Camino Real, where they signed a new CCNR termination agreement in 2021. As part of this agreement, Summer Hill is required to construct a new monument sign, trash enclosure, among other site improvements on 21 El Camino on behalf of the Fong family. Should the Commissioners have any questions regarding this agreement, the applicant team, Summer Hill Communities, and Paul Fong is here for any questions. Before you is a proposed site plan. In blue is the existing pole sign that is located on the adjacent property 11 El Camino. Therefore, again, as part of the agreement, termination agreement, the new sign will be redesigned and relocated onto 21 El Camino Real property, which is shown in red. In compliance with the San Carlos Municipal Code, a new sign program is required for multi-tenant buildings. Currently, San Carlos Plaza does not have a sign program. Before you is a proposed sign program. The monument sign is proposed to be double-sided with 162 square feet per side for a total of 324 square feet. There will be a total of 14 tenant signs, which will comply with the city's sign code and the sign program. The total proposed maximum sign area for the site will be 913.5 square feet, including the monument sign. For reference, this is the existing and proposed sign side by side. The existing pole sign was last updated in 2009, standing at a height of 15 feet and six inches tall and 11 feet and six inches wide. The proposed sign stands at a height of 13 feet and 16 inches tall and is 12 feet wide and complies with the required dimensions in the code. The design of the proposed monument sign is an improvement featuring modern wood cladding and a black-stained concrete base. The tenant signage on the monument sign will also be of similar color to the wood cladding for a more consistent appearance with a white wood background. Before you shows an example of what the typical retail tenant signage will look like. Although tenant signages will vary from business to business, the sign program regulates the size, height, illumination, and location of proposed signage. Color and materials will fall back on the city's sign code, Chapter 18.22. Before you is the site plan for the proposed site improvements. Proposed site improvements include restryping the parking along El Camino to accommodate the proposed monument sign, enhancing landscaping, and removing the existing dumpsters located at the end of the shared cross easement, which is also outlined in red, and constructing a new trash enclosure immediately adjacent to the building, as indicated. The proposed trash enclosure will reduce the parking by three spaces, leaving 127 on-site, which still exceeds the required 113. In addition to the signs and landscaping, the applicant is also proposing to enclose the trash bins and relocate them onto the 21 El Camino Real property. Before you are the diagrams for the proposed trash enclosures. The code requires trash enclosures to be at minimum six feet tall, which the proposed enclosure meets at six feet two. In addition, the proposed trash enclosure features consistent design and materials per the code, employing metal gates with solid metal slats painted brown to match storefronts, and concrete masonry walls with a stucco finish that matches the existing buildings on-site. Overall, staff believes that this is an improvement from the existing conditions. The project also proposes to remove three protected trees on-site due to on-site improvements. That includes the monument sign and the sewer upgrades, and in addition, conflicts with existing overhead power lines. Therefore, the city arborist is in support of the removal of the trees, since there is no feasible alternative for preservation. In compliance with the city's code, three 24-inch box-sized trees from the city's preferred tree list will be replaced on-site, as indicated in this slide. Additional vegetation will also be added to enhance the existing landscaping with a total net gain of 698 square feet. A public notice was mailed out on March 5, 2025, to all property owners and occupants within a 300-foot radius of the property's boundary. A public notice was also published in the San Mateo Daily Journal on Friday, March 7 of 2025, and we have not received any comments since then. And then here is the motion. Should the commission decide to move forward? And so this concludes my staff presentation. Following my presentation, the applicant has also prepared a few slides for the commission, and staff is also available for any questions, if you have any.
Great. Thank you, Vinnie. Happy to hear from the applicant. Welcome. It was Richard, right?
Yes.
Eddie Lane.
Good evening, Chair Clements and Vice Chair Garvey, and Planning and Transportation Commissioners. My name is Richard Norris, and I'm a Director of Development for Summer Hill Apartment Communities. We appreciate the opportunity to share the new monument sign, trash enclosure, and landscaping that we're proposing to construct for our neighbors at San Carlos Plaza with you. I see a few new faces on the commission. Since our plans to transform the 11 El Camino Real CVS into a Summer Hill Community of Distinction were approved, I'm here today as the applicant on behalf of the Fong family, who are the owners of San Carlos Plaza. We first met with the Fongs early in our process to introduce our plans for the CVS site and discuss the CCNRs that were formed with the city when the two properties were originally developed, which included sharing parking areas. Together, we agreed to rescind the CCNRs, and the city council approved the rescission in 2023. Summer Hill also agreed to make the site improvements to San Carlos Plaza, which is the subject of our application this evening. This is the, and, there we go. Sorry about that. This is the existing sign. And you can also see the trash collection area right there. Both are currently visible from El Camino Real. These are the proposed improvements. They include constructing the new sign, trash enclosure, and landscaping that Ms. Chen presented and that you see here. The monument sign has been designed in close coordination with planning staff to create a sophisticated design appropriate for San Carlos. Its use of enhanced materials, internal illumination, and its location near the midpoint of San Carlos Plaza's frontage along El Camino Real improves visibility for San Carlos Plaza's stores and their patrons. Our proposed trash enclosure, as you can see, that's an example of one similar to what we're proposing in the top right, will screen the dumpsters, will maintain an accessibility for the tenants and recology. Finally, we are re-landscaping several of the parking islands, including planting three new trees. We are also planting jasmine along El Camino Real to fill in gaps in the existing jasmine. As we're getting closer to the start of our construction, we are here today to fulfill our commitment to the Fong family and execute our plan to improve San Carlos Plaza. With me here today is Paul Fong, representing his family. Also here and available for questions are the signs designer and author of the Master Sign Program, Michael Birch with Scott AG Signs, and my colleague Elaine Breeze. We also have our landscape architect, civil engineer, and arborist online and available for questions. We are excited to work in San Carlos and appreciate staff's thoroughness and the Fongs' collaboration throughout the process. We have read and accepted the conditions of approval and agree with them. Thank you for your consideration. We're available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Richard, for the additional information. We appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to go to the commission to see if there are any questions, clarifying questions, and then we will take public comment physically and then online, and then go back to have Commissioner comments and consider the motion. So I'd like to start down at my left here with Commissioner Bundy. Do you have any clarifying questions?
Yeah, my one question is with respect to the placement of the two trees. As you turn the bend, it looks like it's a driveway there. I assume that the trees were selected in consideration of the sightlines, and just wanted to confirm that.
Sorry. Yes, that is confirmed. Our civil engineer ran site triangles and confirmed that it would work.
Thank you very much. That's my only question.
Thank you. Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes, I also just need a little bit of confirmation. The removal of the trees is being, would have had to have been done for the sewer upgrade. Is that correct? And if you could explain the sewer upgrade a little bit?
Yeah, definitely. So the, as part of our project, we're running our sewer to the city sewer that's underneath the trees. And I'm going to get it wrong, but the trench is estimated to be four feet wide, and I don't remember the depth, but it was determined by the arborist that it would eliminate them. In addition, there's PG&E gas line in the area, as well as the overhead lines, and they would conflict with the sign's visibility.
And then just one more question to confirm that, that Summer Hill will remain responsible for maintaining the new landscaping?
So as part of our agreement with the Fongs and the city, we believe when the city rescinded the agreement, or allowed it to be rescinded, there was a new document recorded on the title stating that the owners of that property, the Fongs, would be responsible for maintaining the landscaping on their property, and we would be responsible for our property.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Garvey?
Thank you, Chair. Two questions. When I drove by yesterday, I looked at the signs on the existing 13 tenants, and it looks like the signs are on that 18-inch FASHA board that's above each one. And when I looked at your slide, it looked like they were going to go in the same place. Can you confirm that that's where the new, there was a slide you had that showed where the, not the, not the, not the big sign, the, the individual, yeah, that. Is that the FASHA board that?
Yes.
That's there now? And so they'll, they'll just be taking those signs down and replacing them with a different sign?
So all of the tenant signage will still remain there? It's for future tenants? If they're gonna, for future tenants, they'll have to follow the sign program here?
I get it. I didn't understand that. Thank you for clarifying that. And then one final question. I think there was somewhere in the packet that said a median strip was gonna, we were going to lose a little bit of space because of the three additional parking spaces. Is that over in the area where the three trees are being removed? Because I saw a fire hydrant over there, and I'm sure that people have thought about the new sewer, the fire hydrant, and any shrinking, any shrinking area.
So I think, thank you for your question. So there is a small median area right between El Camino Real and the sidewalk. So they're going to be restryping the parking lot, so there's going to be a little bit of a loss, but they are adding more landscaping elsewhere to kind of just make up for it. But it's very like minimal.
And is there a fire hydrant there?
They are relocating the fire hydrant.
Oh, they're relocating it? If that was in the packet, I missed it. All right. Thank you for clarifying. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Anand?
Thank you for the presentation. My question is regarding the location of the new trees and the choice of the trees, because as I see it right now, there are several parking spaces between the new locations of the new trees being planned. Has there been adequate study to determine that it will not be pedestrian? It's a popular plaza for any pedestrian or any other vehicles. That's the.
Yeah, sure. I would defer this to Richard or.
Or is it a question about the species or?
Yes. So the question is about ensuring pedestrian and traffic safety in the pockets where the new trees are being planted. So the choice of the trees and the, how dense the vegetation will be can impact safety, traffic safety. So has that, has that angle been considered when picking the choice of trees that are being planted?
Our landscape architects available, and he put together the palette and then worked with the, or we presented it to the Fongs for review. Eddie, is there an Eddie with Jet Landscape available online?
I am here. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hear me. This is Eddie Beckhueson, Landscape Architect on a project with Jet Landscape Architect and Design. And the tree placement, let me turn down actually the volume a little bit here. The tree placement is coincides with all the safety site triangles given to us by the civil engineer to make sure that any vehicles navigating the driveway and pulling into the site will be clear of and able to see any pedestrians walking along the sidewalk and through the parking lot. The maintenance of the shrubs will be, I'm sure, kept low. They're not very tall-growing shrubs in the first place. They're pretty much matching what is already out there, so it should not be an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other Commissioner questions? I just had one clarification. So I was, thank you for reminding us that the, the sequence of the space next to El Camino, I think you said it goes the parcel and then a small median strip and then the sidewalk that's against El Camino. Is that correct? Okay. And I think that we must have approved that with the last hearing. Oh, I did want to disclose that, was it two years ago? I met with the applicant and walked the site. It was a long time ago. Yes, but that was, that was for the previous item. So is that, that was determined with the last action? Is that correct? The location of the sidewalk versus the planting strip, the small median?
Vinnie, can you go to the aerial view? Yeah. So I think the median that's there, oops, I think I just bumped it forward. The median that's there now is part of 21 El Camino. So this is, this median that's there now showing in green at the bottom of the screen is not being changed other than proposed by this project. It's not being changed as part of 11 El Camino Real.
Okay. All right. And when we were thinking about the, the location for the replacement trees, for the mature trees, I think I heard the applicant say that along the sidewalk where they are now is not suitable for locating larger trees because of a PG&E gas line and because of the sewer connection or the sewer trenching there. Is that correct? My concern is that this, this not become very, you know, difficult to walk by a very large site because there's no shade and because the, because the sidewalk is right against a busy street. So that was, yeah, I just wanted to check in where we were on that.
Yeah, that's correct. And then if you see at the top right image, there are some power lines above as well, so the trees are constantly getting topped. And for that reason, most of the trees there are in low health.
Helpful. So yes, when we don't see shade along walking paths, there are reasons oftentimes, it sounds like, that trees can't be located in those areas. That's too bad. That was my only clarifying question. So let's go now to the public to take public comment and questions. Is there anyone located here tonight physically in the chambers who would like to make a Okay. Lynette, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make a comment?
There are none.
Okay. Let's, let's pause just for a minute and see if anyone virtually or physically here would like to change their mind or put their hand up. They're welcome to make a comment on this item, which is Item 7B, I believe, on the agenda, 21 El Camino. Lynette, is there anyone with hand raised?
There are none.
Okay. I need a motion to close the public comment then.
I move that we close public comment.
Thank you. In a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
And Chair Clements.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. We'll go to Commissioner comments now about the item. And maybe I could start down to my right with Commissioner Anand.
Thank you for the presentation, and I'm excited about the, just the upgrade to the plaza. And I've, I'm there almost every week with my kids or with my family, and the sign can definitely use an upgrade, and it is very encouraging to see that we will get the modern design in. So that's wonderful. As long as we are mindful of the safety concerns. and traffic safety concerns are addressed adequately, I think it'll be, it'll be a great addition, a great upgrade for the San Carlos community, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair, and I will echo those comments. I particularly think the new sign design is very attractive and is a huge improvement over what is there now. I like that it's double-sided, I like that it's backlit, and I liked the color and the materials that were chosen for the sign. I also like the new trash receptacle. When I drove by, I saw where the existing trash receptacles are, and they're, they're off to the side, but they're very exposed, and not only are these tucked behind an enclosure, it's a very attractive enclosure, so I appreciated the thought that went into the design for that also, and I think this project is a nice improvement to our community, and I support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Castaneda?
I agree with my fellow commissioners, this is a very nice upgrade, I like it very much, and I like the added landscaping, and I think it's placed in a nice place to differentiate the properties, and so I agree that this proposal is consistent with our general plan, and I support it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bundy?
Thank you. Vinnie, thank you for the staff report, it was very clear and demonstrated conformance with our requirements. I really appreciated that you included the arborist's report, so we could understand their opinion as well. I agree with my fellow commissioners, the sign is a definite upgrade, it provides nice uniformity but keeps some personal branding of the businesses, so I appreciated that, and the project still exceeds the parking minimum, and I agree that trash enclosure is a really nice upgrade for those using the parcel and the adjacent development as well, so I'm supportive of the project.
Great, and I will join my, my colleagues in supporting this application. I also am here at that plaza quite often, and so I'm very excited to see it getting a little bit of an upgrade, restriping, and a very nice sign, I like the modern touch, I'm sure it's going to be compatible with the forthcoming building, so, so I'm excited to see El Camino spruced up. We've recently had a couple of restaurants close further south on El Camino, and to me, it's very sad when that happens. El Camino is a very important, you know, artery through our community, and so we really like to see it vibrant and like to see that it looks good and represents the community well, so I'm excited about the improvements and also about the forthcoming housing that's going to be going forward there. And I appreciate the additional landscaping, there's quite a bit of it, and I think it's going to really add to the visuals as we, as people, you know, park but also drive by. So I am pleased to support this motion, and with that, I think, Andrea, if we could get a vote? Oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion. Would anyone like to make this motion? I already read a very long item earlier, so...
Okay.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Okay. I move that the Planning and Transportation Commission adopt the resolution approving the request for a design review for a new sign program for the existing multi-tenant building, including a new monument sign and a protected tree removal permit at 21 El Camino Real, APN number 045320230, based on the findings, conditions of approval, and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
Thank you, do we have a second?
A second, that.
Thank you. Now to Andrea. Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Anand?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garvey?
Yes.
And Chair Clements. Yes, thank you. Thank you for your application, we look forward to the improvements, thank you. There is an appeal language on the screen. The Planning and Transportation Commission's action will be final unless it is appealed to the city council within 10 days of the date of the action, which is today, March 17. The deadline to file an appeal is 5:00 PM on Thursday, March 27, 2025. Great, thank you. Now we are on to Agenda Item 8 for reports, correspondence, and general information. First, the report on any recent city council actions.
At the last city council meeting, the council saw our presentation and provided staff with directions on site furnishings, paving design materials, lighting, planting, and design choices for the water feature for the 700 block of Laurel and Harrington Park. No action was taken, it was purely to get feedback and input from them.
Right. Thanks. Item 8B, Planning and Transportation Commission comments or reports. Nope. Okay. Item C, any correspondence this evening?
None to a part.
Okay, thank you. And planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects.
Thank you. So our next meeting will be April 2nd, that is a special meeting, it's on a Wednesday, and that will be for the Northeast Area Specific Plan Study Session, which would be looking at the public draft of the plan, and so that meeting will be only that item. The next meeting is one of your regularly scheduled meetings, April 7th. That will be a pretty full agenda, so you will be hearing 11 El Camino Real, which is the housing project that we were just speaking about. They're proposing to add an additional nine units to the project, so that will result in an updated BMR plan, so you'll be reviewing that. We will also be having the TDM Study Session, as well as the Downtown Streetscape Master Plan Recommendation to Council. So those three items are scheduled for the 7th. Beyond that, we do have several items coming up, as you've seen, I think, on recent agendas and via emails, some of the items are getting scheduled and moved, and so as soon as we know when the, the kind of media items are scheduled, we'll let you know, but we're anticipating Alexandria, the mixed-use and multifamily objective design standards, as well as some traffic and transportation projects coming within the next month, month and a half. Oh, and on the 7th, I will not be here, so Rucha, our principal planner, will be running the meeting, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, we appreciate the updates, I know there's a lot of work the staff is doing behind the scenes, and it's good to see them all come forward at, at the time that is appropriate for everyone, so, great, so next meeting, April 2nd, special meeting on Wednesday, wonderful. Great, and with that, I think we need a motion to adjourn, I mean, it's nice to have a motion to adjourn, would anyone like to make one?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second, the motion.
You don't really usually vote. I'd like to call it adjourned, then, if that's okay with everyone, and the meeting is adjourned.